The workshop for the meeting in preparation for the May twenty second regular meeting. And first off, on behalf of the board, Greg Smith, he told us you lost your mother last week. All of our thoughts and prayers are with you. We know you've been dedicated to her a lot and there's a lot of meetings and take care of her. We hope this brings peace in your life and peace to your family soon. Okay. Does anybody have anything that we could put to the top of the agenda? That has other appointments, other engagements, other commitments? Mike, did you want to go or did you want to sit through the meeting?
We've got to take the role first.
Go ahead.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Cantilamasa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Okay, Mike Hovis, Bezetta Township trustee. Come on up and approach so they can hear the microphone on the desk. Hey, get into the seat right there if you'd like.
Sheriff and trustee, Mike Hovis, Bezetta Township. Couple of things I just wanted to address from the commissioners today. First of all, the Elm Road Waterline Project, I got to thank Gary Newbrow. You know, that project was presented to him twelve years ago. And for him to think about Bezetta and bring this water line to us is huge. I personally stood in my front yard and watched a family business burn down on that road because there not being city water there. So that is a huge impact for all of us. Secondly, the Perkins Jones Road Project, Randy Smith, Gary Newbrow, Scott, Werner, Chuck Miller, Matt Blair, Bill McCoskey. These guys are home run hitters. And, you know, we kept that project close to our vest because we didn't want anybody to steal it from us. So wanted to come here and express gratitude towards those guys and just let you know that we really appreciate the Board of Commissioners and local and county government working together.
And again, that was one thing, what is the project?
It's going to be a thirty million dollar, projected to be an initial thirty million dollar project, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand square foot warehouse. It's going to, the press release they gave me said it was going to be a hundred and twenty full-time jobs with some part-time and some outsourcing jobs available as well. The key is getting that sanitary sewer line up to that warehouse, which benefits all the residents on that road and it's going to benefit future growth in that industrial area. So that is huge for Bezetta Township. Driven past that parcel of land many times as a police officer there and just wondering and saying, why can't we do this? Well, fruition is here today.
Who's been maintaining that for all those years? That's always been mode, it's always been manicured and stuff for twenty years. It's been that way where it's been being prepared for somebody to come.
Well, they were always in preparation for projects just like this. So it's just meant to be.
And that's the field, that's kind of the horseshoe, Perkins Jones.
Yes.
Up to Larchmont, on the opposite side of the road from Kmart.
It's on Kmart's side.
It's on Kmart's side.
Yeah. Yep. So I just, you know, these guys do a lot of work behind the scenes that you really don't get to see. You know, Scott invited me to sit in on meeting with them the other day and to watch these guys handle this project and it's just nothing but complete professionalism.
I was on the phone for that whole call too and just hearing how you working with the developers and back and forth on who's doing this, who's doing this and the cooperation and some of the technical things that they were thinking of where the manual cover is going to be and is this and right of ways and all that stuff was pretty amazing to see how it all comes together. And before you know it, people are going to have sewer there and we're going to have a business that employs a whole bunch of people.
It's a huge project with a bright future.
So congratulations to Bezetta for that. Congratulations to you guys for doing the hard work. I mean, it seems like this is all Bezetta Township trustees have put this one together, you know.
Yeah, our visiting inspector Pete Bazilo and I've been working on this for, well, it's gone on two years.
I talked to Chamber Commerce and they weren't, you know, they were excited that you guys had done this. It wasn't anything where usually that's, they're the ones leading the charge on this or the Port Authority or someone, but this was, this was Bezetta Township trustees making it happen. So that's pretty cool.
We're proud of it, but we appreciate it. Appreciate the commissioners.
Real quick, I want to thank Mike for, you know, attending that meeting. I'm trying to, you know, the development companies out of Indiana, the engineers out of Michigan. So it's really helping them put some local faces here. So there's been a lot of interest in the years to sewer this property, but cost has been inhibited. But it's a twenty-five-hundred feet extension of sanitary sewer, which will provide service to twenty-six homes along the route. So they're moving on it. They informed us last week that the, they're dealing, I think, with three different national contractors that are looking at the plans and they're supposed to give them feedback this week as far as the, any concerns they have with the plans as designed. And once they have that back, they're going to submit the plans back to us, give our final review and approval and this is very fast track project.
That's right. Mr. Hovis, also, do you have any updates? I noticed there's a U-Haul place now on the corner of North River and Route Five. Someone popped up in front of the, the old bank building in front of the old grocery store. And then have you, have you heard anything from there all the way up through the plaza, the old DIY or anything like that? Is there any respective things going on there? Is there any development?
That is Howland Township, so I won't speak on that. I've heard things, but.
Yeah, it's all disjointed over there.
Where does that end? Where's the Bezetta line end?
It actually starts at Perkins. A Perkins farming family home there, they're in.
You got, you got the City of Warren, Warren Township, Howland Township, Bezetta Township, all in that.
In that little conglomerate there.
Yeah. Real quick on the, on the project though, for the funding mechanism for the sewers, are we, is that, there's been talk about a tith with the company. Is that something that's been discussed as well?
They're funding the entire.
They're funding everything, even the homes and everything through that. That's phenomenal and phenomenal thing for the community.
And that's, that's no tax abatement requested above.
No tax abatements, no enterprise zones, nothing like that.
Haven't seen anything and I think they're going to be running laterals.
Yes. Yeah.
Every property on that road.
All twenty-six properties.
At their expense, correct.
To the right of way.
That's a definition of a, well, of course.
The reason being, I mean, they're five feet off the edge of pavement. They're sixteen, eighteen feet deep, so it just makes sense for that to be done one time, less disturbance to the road at a later date. So and on that call also was, as Mike mentioned, County Engineers Office, Randy Smith, Tom Gentis, Steve Gerberi. So we are working very closely with them to make sure that we're expediting reviews on both ends.
That's great. Great. Absolutely.
Great.
Nice job, trustee Hovis.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Yes, sure. Hi, I'm going to say with best purpose, thank you for having me again. Because we ran in here in the midst of a delivery, so excuse us. Right on time, because when you're on time, you're late. I just need to let you know, when I brought my proposal to you guys, we were at forty-seven families. We almost doubled that. We're at seventy-two right now, working with, between Mahoney County and Trumbull County. Mahoney County, they're, the commissioners in Mahoney County, they granted me a grant for a box truck, thank God for that, because we're just going back and forth and we're making many, many trips. But I just want to let you know, between Trumbull County and Mahoney County, we've almost doubled helping these families, so we're like at seventy-two. We proposed that we had asked you for some of the ARP money that was available to help these women because right now, we were going off our Ween Foundation Grant, which was three thousand dollars ICU grant. And they also gave a three thousand dollar grant at the beginning of the year. The funds are running very thin helping the amount of families that we are. We are going by lots of donations. We've had a couple of homes or physicians that are relocating and they happen to give us the contents of their home. So we, we have been able to house almost seventy-two families. Since it was forty-seven when I came to you guys and now we're at like seventy-two. And so we're just asking, I talked with Ms. Yoder and she stated that she put it on your desk, if you guys could please, please, help me with that ARP money so that I can continue to help more families. And then I'm able to get people, because I literally, literally live forty-two minutes from here, my drive, one way. And so I can get, with operational funds, that I can get someone here that can, so that we can distribute the furniture from our facility over there on Highlands, please.
Just to, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, her request is on the commissioner's drive, so you guys can view it at your leisure. It is, I placed it on the maybe list because that's where all of the, any new ones I've been getting are coming. I just put them on the maybe list. So that's where it's at.
What's the amount?
I don't remember.
Okay. I believe I asked for one sixty-five. But at this point, we'll be happy what you've raised us with because we are in such need of being able to be equipped. Because the funds I'm using now is from what I have in Mahoney County, but I can't, or the donations I get, because I can't say no to a woman with five children who don't have anything. We've helped them find emergency housing. Once we place them in emergency housing, we have, we are partnered with Catholic Charities where they pay first, last and security deposit for these families. And then once they show us the signed document and lease, that's when me and my husband, DeVanzo, we go in, we see according to their application to see what they need and make sure that their, their lease matches up with their ID. And once we do the walkthrough there, then what we have, we disperse. And sleep in heavenly peace helps with making the bid.
How many years have you been in existence?
One year. My soft launch was September first. These are the amount of families I've helped since September first. Because I explained, my husband got really deathly sick. And since September first, we have helped them many families. And we have, we've had a resource fair. We're having another large resource fair on June eleventh. And I have over fifty committed vendors coming from Mercy Health, Catholic Charities, you name them. So it is snowballing, but we can't help families without funding. Because at the end of the day, we're out of our pocket because we have depleted the funds that we have had. But Mahoney County did raise us with a grant for forty thousand dollars for a box truck. And that will be released in two weeks, she said. And so once we pick up the box truck, we can go in and get donated homes.
Well, I, I think it's a worthwhile thing. I have to look at the application again, but I obviously think it's worthwhile and there's obviously a need out there. It's just a matter of how much we can allocate.
Absolutely.
Hopefully we can, we're scraping the bottom of the barrel here unfortunately. Because you're getting to us as one of the last. But I think the board needs to entertain it at least.
I think there's room in here for something.
Something.
But what I would like to do, Commissioner, is this is kind of a new group to us on the radar. There's a lot of other nonprofits we deal with and stuff. I don't have enough familiarity with this and they said they've been around for a year. Maybe this way you or I, we tour with her, go look at one of the houses, go talk to a family, something. Not that we don't like, not that we don't trust you anyway. But just to get our feet wet with it a little bit, roll over sleeves and experience a little bit the needs that we compare to the ones we're familiar with.
Absolutely.
Just to see where that fits in, because I would hate to undergive or overgive without doing any research on it.
I agree. I agree. Especially with the new, a rather new program that you're, that you're launching here. I'd be willing to tour.
Do you want to do that?
I will, yeah, absolutely.
Do you want to take the point on this one?
Yeah. We can set up a date and time. Call Amy, the scheduler, right up front. And actually you can go there immediately if you want to and schedule something.
Schedule something and go see, maybe see one of the houses, talk to one of the families you've helped and, and just get behind the scenes a little, pull the curtain back a little.
Have you had your first audit yet?
Um, no. Not yet.
Okay. Yeah, we can discuss all that stuff on the tour and take a look at everything.
Absolutely. I would entertain that.
Okay.
And you, you guys would be pleasantly pleased.
I'm sure. I'm sure.
Pleasantly pleased.
Okay, question. You got that and then report back to me and I'll trust you guys.
Ms. Yoder was getting ready to say something. Ms. Yoder, you were getting ready to say something.
The only thing I was going to, well, before they suggested doing the visit, I was going to ask them if they wanted me to just put it on my list for next week to ask. But since you guys are going to visit, I'll just wait until after you've done that.
I appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am.
And he could visit soon. I'll tell him you guys can schedule quick.
Next week.
I appreciate you. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for what you do.
Oh, thank you.
If you want to go see Amy out there, she'll send it up.
I'm going now because I have people stuff on the back of our truck.
Oh, boy. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, did you, uh, yep, go see.
Hot seat, huh?
Your name and I can guess where you're from, but for the people listening, where you from?
Yep. My name's Mark Mines. I'm with, representing the Howland Historical Society. We filled out our ARP application and, and got it sent in because we have needs, because we actually are blessed now with two houses. You've probably heard about the famous Yellow House that, that got moved from Forty-Fifth to behind the Giant Eagle in Howland. We had Sunday, our first reopening of the, of the Yellow House after it had been moved. And we also had the opening, open house for what we call the Jones House on the corner of King's Grave Road and Howland Wilson Road. And so the Howland Historical Society has both of those homes. When I filled out that ARP application, I only listed items that were in need for the Jones House on King's Grave Road. And when the, when the language first came out, and maybe I didn't hear correctly, but they, they talked about that, that there was like a minimum of ask of like twenty thousand or less. And then somewhere along the line, it got changed and increased and I wasn't aware of it. So I only asked for nineteen thousand on our application for the, for the needs of the Jones House. And, but the Yellow House also has needs, the exterior needs repainted. And getting back to, to the Jones House, we see where the boiler, the heating system in it was installed back in nineteen sixty-seven. And we had, we have the heating people come by for annual checkup and they were suggesting that we need to replace that hot water boiler system in the Jones House. So with that being said, I, I don't know if you folks have any.
We have your application up.
Correct. Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, just to clarify so the commissioners understand where we're at. The original application for nineteen thousand is actually sitting with Attorney Rogers right now. And I believe that she's reached out to Ms. Vannetti for some questions on that one. So that is where that one is, right?
Okay. So you're looking to increase your ask on that same application? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So how much now?
Another ten thousand dollars. I got estimates on the heating system, the cheapest was like six thousand and it went up to like nine thousand dollars for the, for the heating system in the Jones House.
Yeah, that's something we can certainly consider, but I think the nineteen thousand, we already have in the queue, right?
Right. It's, that's what's such, it's sitting on her desk. So whatever the commissioners want to do. It, it would have to be, I would say, for this because it's for specific items, I would say an additional application, not adding it to the current one. That would just be off the top of my head. I think that would probably be what's best and it's up to the commissioners whether they want me to accept that now or, or when they have it and where you want it put, that's where we're at with it.
Here's the thing, we've, we've always made, you know, we try to work with everybody and we try to accommodate everyone, but at the same time, when there's a greater ask as far as dollar amount, you know, that, that sort of hit or miss with us sometimes. But, but why don't you, why don't, why doesn't he resubmit your application for the right amount? And then we'll put, we'll send it back to.
Well, do you want to do, because she has the current one already.
Okay.
Do you want him to just submit an additional application for the additional amount?
An addendum sort of, yeah.
Yeah, just because it's, it's already in that process. That's my only concern about it would be that it's already with her and the timing and everything. If we can get that one approved, then it's very quickly.
These are two separate houses. So let's, what I would say is let's take care, let's get that nineteen first.
Sure.
So we got some money to play with this summer.
I didn't realize.
Yeah, it's two separate.
And then this is the Jones House you're talking about, correct? The other house.
No, the yellow, the, the first application is for the Jones House.
Correct.
And the second one is for the Yellow House.
Yellow House.
So I would, I mean, if they want to assemble, if you guys want me to go ahead and take that application once they have it ready and then you guys can consider it then, I'm fine with however you want to do it. Of course it's up at your.
Yeah, that's fine. The, the, I, I think that having an addendum to the, to the application that we already have, basically.
I would just say an additional one.
An additional application, okay.
Right. Do you want me to go ahead and send a blank one to Mary Jane?
Yes, please.
Let's do that. And then that one, Martha, once you get that one.
I'll let you know and we.
We'll put, put it right away in the maybe like we always do. And then see what she approves. If she approves the full amount on the first one.
Yes.
And then, then we'll pop that one in.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
I don't want to delay because we amend things now, she may pull it out. We've got thirty or forty others waiting and I don't want to push that back. I mean, we want to get you your first initial ask now so you can have money right now to finish the first one.
And has Howland had another, well, I know this is, it's on Howland Township.
Mm-hmm.
Does Howland Township have another ask as well?
Yes, actually Howland Township has two. One is, one is actually for the Bowandale, the Bowandale Food Pantry Improvement. And then they also asked for an ambulance. So they have a total of, and they haven't had, these are on the list. They have a total of roughly a little under two forty between the two asks.
I have no problem with that. I mean, that's, Howland's a bigger township.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck to you. Thanks for what you do with that too, this door was there.
Can I just go now or?
You're more than welcome to listen in. You can leave. It's up to you. It's just boring from here.
Thank you. Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you. Thank you. You got it.
Okay, everyone else is regular, I believe. So are you okay? Time was? Okay. Let's get on with the regular agenda then, dispense of the minutes, approve the bills. I guess before we go any further, Martha, I wanted to bring up something too. Since both of those are kind of ARP related.
Yeah.
I just wanted to reiterate that you and I, in our previous meeting when we had a workshop, did delineate Martha as our official spokesperson to deal with Tony Rogers.
Yes.
So we're both in agreement with that, that Martha has full authority to deal with Tony on the issues, to represent us, answer questions, be the intermediary in there along with Ms. Soski to do that.
About that.
No, there's, there shouldn't be because we explained that.
I just want to make it clear here that you and I are both in agreement, a majority of the board. It delineated that Martha does this with Ms. Soski. Okay. Sorry. Number three, approve additional appropriations. The first three are commissioners.
Okay. And they've actually, oh, I see what we get. All right. So yes, the first three are the commissioners, are through the commissioner's office, just so, to clarify. The first one is an insurance reimbursement for the building inspector ranger. And so that's, it came in, it's an additional appropriation. We got the, there was an accident or something with one of the vehicles in the building inspection. So it's an insurance and that will be actually, that revenue will actually be approved by the Budget Commission on five twenty-eight. The next one is actually, it's two separate combined because we're moving things from one place to another. So it's that, this is the body cam. It's the, it's the transfer side of the body cam project for two eighty-four, four twenty. And then the appropriate vendor expense side of the body, body cam thing. So it's, it's actually, the five sixty-eight is two eighty-four, four twenty twice. The next one is very similar. It's the Marx radio. It's the two seventy-nine, four seventy-five, one thirty-nine, seven thirty-seven, sixty-seven of it is to appropriate money on the transfer side. The other one is the, to the, it's another one thirty, identical amount, one thirty-nine, seven thirty-seven, sixty-seven to appropriate the vendor expense on, on the vendor expense side. And those were both approved, or all the projects there, both the body cams and the Marx radio were approved May first, twenty twenty-four. Do you want me to go ahead and move on?
You go ahead. Approve, approve transfer.
Transfer of appropriations, adult probation is supplies and telephone service. Board of Health is technical equipment. Central Court is security system service calls. Children's Services Board are additional bond required for the, per order of the probate court. The commissioners are getting a new refrigerator. The Commissioners are getting a new refrigerator. The Common Police Court, the three thousand is for interpreted, interpreter services. The three hundred is for supplies, domestic relations, our mattresses for the detention center. Eastern Court is security and bailiff center, bailiff services. And Bob always wants something to say, so the last three are his.
Always wants something to say.
I know.
The one thousand nine hundred and sixty four dollars is for additional water testing for our Warren Township Water District. The one thousand dollars is for additional funds for small tools for the rest of the year. And the six thousand dollars is due to our Neco annual contract, which is how we read meters, and additional copier fees.
Right. Um, the next one is the amended certificate from the County Budget Commission.
Martha, before we get to that one.
Yeah.
Um, Commissioner, you know, makes a, we, I don't see it in the cafeteria area, do we paint, and we brought in ABI as a, as a new vendor. We need tables and chairs to go down there to finish the remodel of that that area. We ordered twelve chairs and some other barstool-type chairs from Gasser Chair, Tremble County Community, or Tremble County Business. They make hundreds of thousands of chairs a year. Their biggest client is the casinos in Las Vegas. In fact, one casino just ordered forty thousand chairs from them.
Wow.
Now, they're made right here in Hubbard, Ohio. So when I was building, we looked at chairs out there, they gave us a quote of the chairs, they were around a hundred and some bucks apiece, that I was going to bring back to the board. Mr. Gasser called back and said he'd like to donate it to Tremble County now, being a Tremble County business. So they'd like to donate the chairs. So I'd like to be able to receive the chairs.
Oh, absolutely.
And go out to get them. Now, we do need tables. We need a couple of tables, and Bill Hart has been shopping around for tables. He came up with a few options, and I'd like to give permission administratively to appropriate him up to twenty-five hundred bucks to buy tables for down there that'll match with the chairs, so we can complete the redesigned.
Absolutely. How many tables are we talking about?
Uh, I think it's like four square tables, and then he has one long, like a bar pub-type table that goes along the wall, that will have like bar stools with it with charging ports. When people sit down there, they can bring their electronics, charge their laptop, charge their phone while they're down there eating, and then Beth.
Well, well, he received multiple quotes, though, that's all I'm concerned with. Is he going to get, you know, multiple?
Well, he's looked around, it's very hard to find, like.
Yeah.
Restaurant tables.
Yeah.
You know, especially to source them locally.
Sure.
And we went through Gasser, we went through ABI, we looked all over the place. He's found a couple of options. One of them he found on Amazon that that works for the longer one. Now, the smaller ones, Gasser's hooked him up with a vendor.
Also A and N and Warren, A and N Restaurant Supply.
Okay, well, of course, yeah, you're experienced in that.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's one we're going to go look at. But I get to give him some type of budget to look at, and what we're looking at for these things.
Yeah, oh, no, of course.
And guess, maybe it's going to be three hundred a table, maybe three or four hundred a table.
We'll prove them anyway. It's, it's not like we're not, we're giving him the money to do this.
Correct. And I, and I just want, I just want to, before you go shopping, I want to make sure we get a majority of the board to consent to give him somewhat of a budget to go out there and shop and look for that.
Absolutely.
And then Beth Carmichael put together a conglomerate of photographs of Tremble County attractions, and she's, she's going to decorate the walls with Tremble County attractions for down there. And then the next phase of this, which, which I'll bring up, another point is the sign outside the elevator, that Mr. Muccio has agreed to paint a sign with Tremble County Attractions on there, that says cafeteria, and then the orange wall, when he first come into the left, I would like to dedicate that wall to him and his forty years of service in the Tribune, doing the political cartoons. And he's, he's going to put his greatest hits of all the ones he's had, non-political ones, there's going to be nothing up there slamming on a politician or.
I'm in a few of those.
We all are, yeah.
I feel like mine.
So he's going to take his ones, like remembering nine-one-one, and talking about, you know, the Darrow House and different things.
Yeah.
And then I'd like a plaque there, you know, just commemorating him and his services, you know, because this is something like history, a lot of people get the paper, and I've gotten the paper just to read that cartoon, and I've seen them in every office, and like you said, we've all been victims of it.
Oh, yeah.
Or we've all been patted on the back by him, and he's fair all the way across the board, but he is a Tremble County treasure, and I think that's a place there that if we can display his artwork, you know, we're looking with that, we're looking at a budget around another twenty-five hundred to get these things, get them done up laminated where they're put on like a, a laminated backboard to be displayed and hung on there. And he's, wants to do twenty-five of them to represent the townships, you know, and kind of, or twenty-five townships in the county, and will cover that whole wall. And then, like you said, then afterward, I'd like to have a, get a commemorative plaque on the wall with his picture that honoring him for the service of the county.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
So that's another phase of administratively, if we want to, you know, if we can do this. And that's ballpark, that's going to be around twenty-five hundred for the pictures. By the time we get the sign and the plaque, you know, we're going to be talking a little bit more than that, but.
If you're looking at a picture of him, perhaps he's done a self-portrait of himself that he would like to put there.
Yeah, yeah. But I've met with him quite a few times, and he's in the process now of picking out his, you know, going through forty years of cartoons and figuring out which ones fit for the history of Tremble County, and trying to find something from each township that's on there. And I think that'll be an attraction, too, that when people come in the building, they may want to go down there and just see that. I mean, that'll be an attraction in itself for people that are history buffs, and people that have followed the newspaper forever.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh.
Oh, I think it's great to.
Yeah.
Celebrate our heritage here.
Opposite wall will be the Ray Smith Wall someday.
Yeah.
If you're good.
Yeah.
Okay, so I can get Bill Hart on the tables, and then we can clean that part. And when that hap, when we get the tables, then we'll be ready for Mr. Peralos, maybe I would like to come in with Mr. Gasser, and we could do like an official ribbon-cutting opening of that.
Absolutely.
And let all employees know, staff, that it's there for their liking, and even civic groups, if they wanted to meet in there, there's an opportunity when we have the tables and chairs now, that smaller groups can actually meet there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So number five is to receive the amended certificate for the, of the County Budget Commission. Number six dash twenty twenty four for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty four, to dated May thirteenth, which was our last one, our last meeting. Increasing estimated resources in the funds listed. Auditors is just a quarter of appeals, there was a little bit of a mistake in the, in the budget initially, because it was a pro-rata share, so we corrected that. The transfer within the same fund is of a hundred and forty-nine, two hundred. Commissioners is the nine-one-one feasibility report. The second Commissioners is the engineering for the coroner and the morgue. The next one, the hundred thousand, is the hydrilla. The next one is family court carpeting, and then the fairgrounds light pole. The next two are correspond back to the, because remember, this is, I'm ending the certificate of revenue, they're the revenue portion of the Body Cams and the Marx Radios.
And number six, concur with Tremble County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed. The necessary permit fee has been submitted, and approval subject to conditions listed on the permit. Dominion East and Mike Coats Construction. Seven, concur with Tremble County Engineer for special renewal fleet permit, chromatic excavating. Number eight, award the lowest responsive and responsible bid submitted by Lake Erie Construction for the TRU twenty twenty-five guardrail upgrade project in the amount of three hundred nine thousand seven thirty-five, be paid directly by a three hundred thousand dollar grant received through the County Engineers Association of Ohio, with additional costs to be paid from the County Engineers Fund, and enter the contract with Lake Erie Construction for said project. They had one other bid shook company, which was ten dollars, or thousand dollars higher. Concur with Tremble County Engineer and receive resolution number four twenty-four, passed by the Council of the City of Hubbard on May sixth, twenty twenty-four, in support of the Hubbard City number five bridge, being renamed World War I, World War II Veterans Memorial Bridge, in honor of veterans who have served World War I and World War II. Set up a public hearing for the consideration of bridge name change, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, section fifty-five, eleven oh nine. Hubbard City number five bridge is located on East Park Avenue, immediately east of North Main Street. And there is a bridge dedication this Saturday. It was the second bridge for, let's see, Martha, let's see. We got an invite this morning, they'd like a Commissioner there for the dedication. That's the Howland Bridge that we approved.
Okay.
Last month, and this one here is the, um, the Veterans Memorial Bridge dedication. It's Saturday at ten AM. They dedicated one of them already, this is the second one. I will not be in town Saturday, so I don't know if you'll be in town, if that's something you possibly be able to attend Saturday morning.
I've got to say about my son's schedule, if, I think this might be a soccer game, but I have to look.
Yeah. Uh, number ten. Authorized any more president of Board of Tremble County Commissioners to execute the memorandum of understanding by and between the statewide consortium of County Law Library Resources Board and Tremble County Commissioners on behalf of Tremble County Law Library's Resources Board's application for grant. Law Library was awarded a grant in the amount of two thousand one hundred ninety for the purchase of three HP Elite six hundred desktop computers, approved by the Prosecutor's Office. Eleven, approve the detailed drawings for the Smith Stewart, Strausmeyer Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, known as County Project number two S seventeen, Tremble County Combined Sanitary Sewer District Metropolitan Sub-District. Do you happen to bring a copy of those drawings with you?
Uh, they were my, they were submitted through the portal.
Okay, so the drawings are on the portal?
Yes.
So we can look at them on the portal?
Titles.
And then make sure all your engineered diagrams and measurements are correct.
Have been submitted.
Yeah. Number twelve. To reappoint Mr. Gary Newrow, PE Sanitary Engineer, to a three-year term on the State Capitol Improvement Program, District Six, Ohio Public Works Integrating Committee, and reappoint Scott Werner, PE Assistant Sanitary Engineer, as an alternate for a three-year term on this Integrating Committee. I have no problem with that?
No.
Scott, you want to talk about it a little bit, or?
Well, go back to number eleven. Number eleven was a petition project submitted by residents along Smith Stewart Road from State Route one ninety-three to Strausmeyer, and then along Strausmeyer itself, involves the construction of eight-inch sanitary sewer, provide service to fifteen homes. And again, I think number twelve kind of speaks for itself, it's to reappoint Gary and I to the Ohio Public Works Integrating Committee. I know you didn't get to thirteen.
Thirteen.
Yeah.
Authorized Board Tremble County Commissioners Clerk to readvertise sealed bids for construction of Scoville Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, known as County Project number five S sixteen, in Tremble County Combined Sanitary Sewer District, Mosquito Creek Sub-District, by a township.
Yes. Commissioners, we need to readvertise this, the bids came in at twenty-seven percent over the Engineers estimate. Unfortunately, I think everybody is seeing this on their projects, the cost between material and labor, but yes, we're going to readvertise this.
Did it come in low?
We're hopeful.
Number fourteen, authorize the Board of Commissioners Clerk to advertise two for sealed bids to provide pharmaceutical services for the inmates of Tremble County Adult Justice Center for a two-year period, in accordance with bid specs, the current contract expires July thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Major?
Yeah, Major Dan Mason from Tremble County Sheriff's Office. Basically, our pharmaceutical contract expires at the end of July, and we need to go back out to bid to basically just make sure that we are receiving the best bill.
And then, how, who reviews the bids? Dr. Malvase, correct?
Yeah, we usually put a team together last year since nobody in the corrections staff really understands pharmaceuticals.
Well, that's what, that's my question, is that came up before, the who's, who's reviewing the bids, but you need, you need to know the pharmacology of all these medicines, and a doctor would be the person that would review those, because.
Right.
He would know the side effects of this as opposed to that, and all the medical terminology.
Right, there's the pharmaceuticals themselves, there's also some other issues, like sometimes we have inmates that come in with special medical needs, and being able to give the medicine here within a twenty-four hour turnaround period, making sure that the sitter's able to complete that, you know, making sure that there's, all life-saving medications are available, since there's an array of pharmaceutical companies.
Right.
Okay, I got no problem with that, no? Fifteen, concur with Tremble County Sheriff Foman Rowe to renew the agreement with the city warrant for the years twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, for housing persons charged with or convicted of violation of the ordinances of the city warrant in Tremble County Jail. Upon the execution of such agreement, serving the interest of Tremble County by the Tremble County Sheriff and city warrant, the Board of Commissioners will consider final approval of the agreement. City warrants will provide space in Tremble County multi-jurisdictional minimum security misdemeanor and full-service jail at the rate of thirty-seven thousand five hundred per month. Agreement commences on January one twenty-four and ends December thirty-one twenty-five. So two-year agreement with the jail. And of course, we're going to get asked, you know, why it started January one, and we're just bringing it up now.
Uh, Major Dan Mason from Tremble County Sheriff's Office. Basically, I dropped the ball. Unfortunately, last year, at the end of summer, beginning of fall, we have our state jail inspection, which is pretty time-consuming. Right after we completed the jail inspection, we rolled into all six of our units, came up for negotiations, so we were, you know, contract negotiations with all the corrections in rank, all the deputies in rank, and then, you know, civil. And at about two weeks ago, our finance came to me and said, we have not received any money from the city warrant for the contract. I reached out to Jan Velasquez from the Warren Finance Department, and she said, well, we did our part, everything's ready to go. The, the city council, I believe, has a, has an ordinance in place that they'll go ahead and start paying the bill, and we can't release it till we have signed agreement.
So this will be retroactive to?
Right.
January?
Right, thirty, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars a month.
And that, no increase to the city of Warren?
That is correct.
How do we, how do we determine those?
There, there's a formula.
There's a formula, okay.
It's put out, one of the things that I'm kind of with Larry about doing an increase is under the Ohio Revised Code, any city that has city ordinances that charges people and brings them in, jail under a city ordinance only, they have to pay a, pay that fee per inmate. We make a flat rate for the city of Warren, we made that same offer for every city, they find to go into those agreements, you know, but they said that they'd be willing to pay for each time somebody booked in with a city ordinance only. However, every city has managed, the only time people get booked in here is under the Ohio Revised Code, so we collect no money from any other community. You know, under the Ohio Revised Code, townships and other sites of all county agencies that bring people here, we're not able to collect on those.
Didn't realize that. We, we have a prosecutor here, a number of our prosecutors. Now, I mean, I know that obviously government entities routinely retrodate contracts, there's not an issue there with that. I know that's being made of the, the issue, but that's not always an issue.
No, they're, they're routine. I mean.
Yeah.
If you're trying to go out for bids or something, it's not a daily, it's, it makes them crazy, but it's.
This is two government entities, you know, sort of working together, so there wouldn't be any, any issue.
And then we provide them the service.
Yes, exactly.
A name for the record, did I answer that?
Yes, Monroe Foman.
Martha Monroe. Okay. We don't have to collect anything from Niles or Gerard or?
Unless they book somebody in under a city ordinance only, we don't, we don't collect money.
Does that ever happen?
It had, certainly after we signed the agreement with Niles Police Department, and then after about six months or so, they ended up not bringing anybody here on the city ordinance only. It had, certainly after we signed the agreement with Nile's Police Department, and then after about six months or so, they ended up not bringing anybody here on the city ordinance only.
Okay. Notify Ohio Department of Liquor Control that a public hearing not requested on liquor permit listed below, Columbia Foods, DBA Giant Eagle in Liberty Township. Number 17. Adopt the resolution of Board of Commissioners of Tormal County, Ohio, entering upon its journal the filing of an amended petition for annexation, seeking annexed land situated in Howland Township from the City of Warren, Ohio, parcel 3, and known as being lots number 25, 26, 65, 66, in the Crystal Springs Park allotment, which plat is recorded in volume 12, page 64, and 65 of the plat records of Tormal County, Ohio, as referred as VPNS 28-486874, comma, 875, 876, and 877, and refer the legal description of the perimeter of the map or plat of the territory proposed to be annexed to the Tormal County Engineer for review. The petitioners are Nader, and special note, Attorney Nader filed the original petition April 16, 2024. He filed in compliance with the Ohio Revised Section 709023 as a special annexation. Can someone tell us about this?
It's just an amendment to the petition that was already filed, based on what the county engineer corrections that he wanted.
This is the Crystal Springs apartments?
Yes, allotments, yes.
This came to us?
In April.
Yeah, that's right.
And now the process will start over again. So I'll be sending the documents to the engineer, and, uh, I'll be Yoder again, and when...
So essentially, the process has to happen again, if they amend it, it all has to be done again.
Right.
And then we'll have the regular hearings and stuff with Howland Township and the city?
There won't be a hearing as long as the City of Warren and Howland Township agree. If everyone agrees, then I will give all the paperwork to the three of you, and then you'll review it and decide whether to approve or deny.
I don't think this is gonna be a contentious one, but I could be taken out, I think that all the parties, as far as Howland and Warren, are in agreement on this, so it'd be kind of a...
If they're not, we'll have to hire outside counsel again because our prosecutor represents Howland.
Correct. But don't foresee... Don't foresee that happening.
Okay. What do you know about the parcel? This is just an apartment building, or it's a...
The Crystal Springs allotments?
I... That I don't... I don't know.
I'm sure there's utilities that are, you know, there's a utilities agreement between the township and the city that's gonna benefit everyone, so I think everybody's happy.
Until we have a hearing or something that doesn't involve us.
Correct.
All right, 18. Adopt the resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Fund, Hubbard Historical Society.
And Martha Yoder, Tormal County Auditor, they had requested some funds for some specific repairs, however, Attorney Rogers did not believe that those expenses were eligible. However, because they did have some revenue loss, she approved $4,000, $4,000 is eligible, so that's what this is, it's $4,000. I did, on both this one and the next one, the Leavitsburg, because those were reductions from what they had asked for, I did reach out to both entities, and both were actually just very happy with what they got, so, nice responses from both.
So we'll get some money back from what we allocated?
Yeah, it'll be... It's listed on here, it's... I've been accounting for it that way the last couple, since she approved it, so it's...
But we haven't frozen the additional money?
No, 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 we just... I just let it where it was, the four grand and the... And the whatever, the 67.3, I just reduced it, it's on the spreadsheet. The spreadsheets that you've gotten the last couple of weeks have reflected that.
And 19 is the agreement for the above. 20 is the ARPA funds for downtown Leavitsburg Heritage Association, and this is for the train station?
Yeah, again, some of what they had asked for was deemed ineligible by Attorney Rogers, and so the grant is less than what they had asked for. Again, got a great letter, uh, email back when I emailed them and explained it, they understood, they were happy with what they got.
And they... But they are getting $63,700.
Yeah, $63,700.
So it certainly more than what Hubbard's getting, but it's a much bigger project, of course. And this will get them a long way towards what they wanted.
Right, absolutely, and like, as I said, they were very excited about it.
Okay, and just to reiterate again, you know, of course, I hate seeing, we all hate seeing things get denied, but there are federal rules, and they have to follow, they have to fit, you know, and just like we had, we explained earlier to, um, like, before the meeting started, I explained to Jussie Hovis, um, you know, we gave ambulance out some communities, then one got denied, it was, they went on, based on calls, they went on the formula of, did they qualify or not for that specific thing? It wasn't like, ambulance is all qualified all of a sudden, you know, it still has to go through the process, they have to justify it, they have to, you know, and a lot of it is in their grant writing somewhat, I'm sure, and doing due diligence to make sure that when they prepare it, they dot every i, cross every t, and say the right buzzwords, and do the right research.
Well, and I will say that Attorney Rogers, because she sees me on a lot of this correspondence, so I... She's being very diligent, as far as, you know, trying to help people out, and again, last week, I think it was, maybe last week or the week before, the generator request from Kinsman had been denied, but she went ahead and, you know, she said, "If we can get more information, maybe we can look at this in more data," because they had submitted no data as the power outage, and I was able to, actually, it was kind of nice that Mr. Rhodes was here from Ohio Edison at our workshop, so I was able to connect him with Kinsman Township, and also Gus Davis?
Yep.
Who has the same similar grant, so they can kind of get that data, and Mr. Rhodes has been working with Kinsman to kind of do a different kind of report than they usually do, to try to make it fit, you know, exactly what Attorney Rogers was looking for. So, you know, she's been willing to work, and I'm trying very hard to make sure that I help as much as I can, or just connect people, so that we can...
And a lot of it isn't just filling the application, I'm saying, "Can I?" It's filling the application, saying, "Here's why we qualify, and here's why..."
Right, absolutely. And as I said, she tries very hard, she had actually reached out to Kinsman to get that data, and they didn't recognize, the person that answered it, just didn't recognize that there was an avenue to get it.
Right.
And so, helping them get that avenue, and, you know, we'll see how it works, we'll see what happens with it, but at least we've tried a little bit to try to make it... Make it work and make the... Make sure that they have the right data.
Sure, and we don't want to deny anything, when we pass them through, we hope that they all go forward, but...
And I will say the same, you know, I've had some conversations now recently with Attorney Rogers, and she's the same way. If she... Her practice, outside of what she's doing for us, is with local government, so she's actually knows a lot of these people that she's dealing with, and she certainly wants to make sure that people get what they want, but it's also, she... Her job is to make sure we follow law, so...
Okay, next up, adopt the resolution with ARPA funds for the Mark's Tower project, we've been talking about this for a couple of years, we're finally at the point now where it's going forth, and we are... You want me to...
Yeah.
Appropriating $500,296 total for the tower.
Well, that's for the... The Motorola company is doing the hardware, software, and those items, other services for the tower, so that we're having a joint resolution to put it both on one.
Jim Masaki?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim Masaki from 911 Auditor's Office, 911.
Feels that way sometimes.
Yeah, we feel that way. Emergency calls. So we have to adopt the resolution or to approve the expenditures, $500,296 for the Motorola Solutions Inc., and Thermobond Buildings for $193,950, which is for the Mark's Shelter. I talked to Mr. Dick Miller, who has 18 years of service with the State of Ohio, Department of Administrative Services, he oversees the operation of 370 towers in the State of Ohio, over four zone controls. So I'll kind of mix the two together here. The system that's used by Motorola is the only equipment that can be purchased and implemented with the entire Mark's system throughout the State of Ohio. So bootstrapping that with the next resolution, the sole source, we can only use that Motorola equipment. I've talked to Motorola many, many times, through emails, they have a 44-page agreement, which is part of your package for the actions today, and they've been very helpful, so hopefully, we can get this moving. They want to guarantee their price only through May 26, which is next week, so if we get this passed tomorrow, we can get that moving. With the Thermobond, sounds a little strange, we say it's the Mark's Shelter, it's actually a small building, which will house all of the technical equipment, it weighs 60,000 pounds, that it has to be sort of relatively bomb-proof.
Oh.
Yeah, so the only additional cost, in talking to Mr. Miller, since we are, you know, partnering with them, is that I'll have to verify with him, the Thermobond equipment was actually under a state purchasing plan, and that was actually competitively bid by the State of Ohio. You know, a lot, sometimes they're not, this was actually a competitive bid, so we have the Motorola under the sole source provision, and we have the Thermobond is actually a low-bid awarded contract by the Ohio Buys, which is state purchasing program. So the only other item that wasn't covered under the Thermobond agreement, and I have that as part of your package as well, was some unloading and delivery, that I'll have to talk, maybe the state will be doing that for us. You have to have a crane to unload it, obviously being 60,000 pounds, so I'll talk to Mr. Miller and verify, but that is not included in the Thermobond bid price, so...
So there... And there was a company that came to a meeting here, not so distant, but that...
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if you remember, but they talked about the procurement policies of the county and how we handled it. We didn't have anything to do about it.
No, that was the issue about the State of Ohio, yeah.
And that was about the Thermobonds, about the building?
It's exactly what it was, yes.
Yeah, I do remember, yeah.
Because they thought it was part of their bid package?
Right.
But it was separated, because this is probably an unusual one for the state, since we're partnering, that was specifically excluded.
What portion of this are they picking up? I know that there was a...
State?
Of the state, or have they...
The tower.
They're taking the entire tower, this is our board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, which, in speaking to Mr. Miller, we're actually getting so far the benefit of the bargain, I think the state was happy to have our cooperation, you know, we were happy to have their cooperation, so...
Well, it's much needed in that area, as we...
Oh, absolutely, that's been long overdue, for the connectivity, for the various departments, and health and safety for the whole county, and anyone who uses the Mark's system.
It's a shame that when we turned over to the Mark's radios and the Mark's system, that unfortunately, we're left with these dead zones, now that we're supposed to cure all our problems?
Right.
And unfortunately, we're still having to do stuff like that to make...
There's little glitches, I think over the years, we've talked about it, where certain departments said, due to some type of coating on school windows and things, that some of the signals don't penetrate.
Yeah.
Crazy. Always a work in progress.
Well, it's much needed, it's for public safety, we have to do it.
Since before I got here, a couple of years ago, you've been talking about it, so I'm sure there's a lot of safety services that are waiting for this patiently, and...
Yes, they have.
It's, uh, this needs to happen.
But we thank the state for working with us, and the lion's share of it is they're taking care of it, the town, I think, so, for us, only have to shoulder the burden of the $693,000 only.
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 So they have... They have... They've already had...
In comparison, it's not a question.
Yeah, they've already had some site preparation there, Mr. Miller says that they'll be scheduling some pre-construction oversight, which he's gonna email me, and once they actually start construction, they'll have a website that you can see day-to-day progress, and he said we can put anybody on that if we wish to have, you know, on that system, so, always, he's absolutely wonderful to work with, and always available, I compliment him on that, and you remember him?
Oh, yeah, we met with him in person, he came here.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah. Long time coming, but we're moving forward.
And then the last two items are just the appropriations of those funds?
Right.
Um, through the process. That ends the regular agenda items for tomorrow, and, uh...
Major, I have a quick question, Major.
Yes.
Major, do you have that contract with the City of Warren, is that... So nothing's changed in it, it's basically the same contract as it was?
That's correct, I had emailed you the word document.
The only thing different is the dates.
And then we're giving them a flat rate, so they have more or less, they're still paying the same amount, and they're okay with that?
Just wanted to make sure on that.
It's the same language.
Same language, nothing's changed, that's good.
Just the date.
Yeah, I got four or five things, but Diane, do you wanna...
Kind of waiting for... Chrissy's gonna come up from my office to help because of the levy, it's about the levy, so I...
I guess we can start on some of the stuff that I had here. Uh, the Virgin Diamond.
Yes.
Um, this is the week it seemed like they started doing some more stuff on 46, and the traffic on Howland-Wilson Road was just ungodly the last couple of days.
North Road.
Yeah, North Road, yeah, I mean, just backed up beyond belief. Someone asked me, they said, "Whose idea was it, the Virgin Diamond? Where'd this come from?" And I don't know, it wasn't here, so legitimately, I've got that question too, whose idea was this, and why Tormal County, and...
Commissioners have nothing to do with it, so, as you know, with any project, any road project, we don't have anything to do with it.
This was a state bar, was it a state game, they said?
Yeah, those are both state roads.
46 and 82.
Right. The high... In the state, it was a very high problem.
Yeah.
And that comment was from? That was Diane from the Levy.
We live on Tibbetts Wick between 11 and 422, and we've seen a significant uptick in people.
And it's gonna be this way potentially for three years, so I apologize to the citizens out there, because I got calls this week, they're like, "Whose harebrained idea was this? Why are you doing this? Is this really worth it? And so, all we can say is the state has one other area that they did this in, and the people down there brag about it and say how great it is traffic-wise, and hopefully, we'll be saying the same thing a couple of years from now, but we're all feeling the pain too, I travel, you travel, we all do.
I have to mention the businesses that are over there.
Well, and I feel for, you know, the out-of-town businesses that are heading towards the mall, that may just say, "I'm going online and shopping, forget that, and I'm not going to Scrappy Town, traffic's crazy, I'm not going even there, let's go to Boardman," or, you know, we need to dance around that a little bit, or figure ways to help ease the pain, and that's something too, that we can work probably with ODOT, and I know Beth has been working us tourism-wise. When Bass Pro opened, that was a concern and a consideration, is what's gonna happen with the mall. We've got the turning lane, you know, that's in progress behind Bass Pro Shop, but that doesn't alleviate anything in regards to North Road and Howland-Wilson, and Howland Springs, and all the other ins and outs, people were trying to find a shortcut or find a way around it, but it's painful, very painful. So I guess I got my answer somewhat answered, but...
Two state routes, State Route 82.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, the state project.
And this week was particularly bad, because they dropped the other bridge.
Right.
So once 46 is open, it goes back to more normal traffic, but the... Right now, you can't get under, so it's completely...
Five days, I think?
That's all?
When's that over?
Till Thursday.
Thursday?
And I was.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Sunday, yeah. 'Cause I was down at Lou's yesterday, the bridge is already down, so it's just debris across.
Yeah, it didn't take them long to do the first one too, I mean, I remember it was like.
It was less.
Is there anyone from the engineer's office or state that's listening in that has any input on this?
Well, I think they said in the newspaper over WFMJ that it was eight, eight AM Thursday to reopen.
The health code?
Before the holiday weekend.
The health code.
That's good.
If there is, you can hit star six and add input if you have anything. I know, I know they've been working on it, I mean, there's been talks about this, isn't anyone in particular's fault within our county government, we just, um, any tips we can pick up on which way to go or whatever we need to share, and, um, you know, we feel for the people who live on those roads, that are, that are gonna have to deal with this thing, I'm sure they're not happy at all, um, I said, it's progress, they have the pains of progress. Okay, uh, is that? Okay, uh, one of the other things I had on here was, um, had, did the booth last year at the fair, and we had it at the Italian Fest. Both those are gonna be coming up before we know it, so, um, first, we, I guess we need to make a decision about having our booth first, and then secondly, are we gonna try to expand and invite other departments and maybe ask the fair board for that space outside for people to display things? So that was an idea that came up last year was, um, the county engineer had a nice booth, uh, uh, an area, the, uh, recorder had an area, we had an area, we had a big open area in front of us that nobody utilized. It was discussed amongst the staff last year, we had the clicker and we had, I'm sure Martha's got the figures somewhere, but it was.
Thousands.
In the, yeah, in the thousands as far as people that, that we serviced or that came through the booth for that week. I think even the one day I was there, it was like a hundred and eighty-six or something, just on that day. Um, is there anything more we can be utilizing to get the word out, you know, in regards to, you know, what's going on in the county? You know, there's something maybe even, you know, like the, the Virgin Diamond and traffic, or attractions, or Tourism Bureau, or is there something more that we wanna do? Um, the Board of Health has their tent, you know, we have a, we have a footprint out there.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. We had a lot of questions on senior levy, we did.
Yep, we did.
Didn't we?
Yes, we did.
I think anything under the.
Yeah, we had the senior levy, we had the signs last year with the, the fan thing.
But there's, but there was also information, the pamphlet, yeah.
The actual person, so it would be so helpful.
Yeah, it's hard for her to get out.
Maybe one of your, maybe one of your board members?
That's a great idea.
Maybe people.
(laughing).
And Lisa, what about our staff? Can we do that again? Do they have an interest, would they, would they do it again?
Yes.
So I guess, I, I, I would like to say yes.
Oh, of course.
Let's have, let's commit to the fair that we will be there again, and see if we get at least our, uh, room that we had before, and Lisa, if you wanna take control of that.
I think we had Dawn and I.
Dawn and you, but you're back again, you guys on the, do you want to do that?
And they get as much information as they can from all of our departments, all of the ones under our.
Yeah, like tourism or.
Right.
Tourism gave us a lot.
Tourism, uh, senior levy.
I was just saying, there was a big space out front there, it just, it just seemed like, boy, we really need something here, it rained a few days, and everybody was under the grandstand, it would've been nice to have.
Yeah.
More of it.
That's what I wanna know, is would.
She might need to have her own space, the auditor.
I mean, that's.
Would you like your own space?
There's a lot.
There's a lot.
Well, I heard rumor.
There's a lot of questions about.
I heard rumor, and I, don't take, this is true or not, I don't know, but there is a building, there's an old gas station that used to be in Cortland, that was out there on the, kinda in the midway, and I heard the county engineer was remodeling that, rebuilding that.
So?
And had plans to potentially use that for his own booth out in the fair itself.
Okay.
But I, I don't, I haven't heard anything since then, and maybe we can confirm that, 'cause he had an area next to us that could be an auditor's area if, if he's not utilizing that, if he is going out to that old gas station. Is there anyone from the engineer's office on the line? Maybe we can confirm that or not?
Steve or Gary or Randy, anybody?
I know, I know that was a project that, um, Engineer Smith was working on last year, and then I saw the building had been removed, and they were rebuilding some things and refurbishing it, but I had heard from the fair board that, that they were potentially looking to move out there onto the midway, or not the midway, but the, the main drag through the center and the historical village or whatever, uh, they were on the corner there. And if that's the case, that may free up.
I think we talked about moving across, in that area across because, um, people would see us and have more access that way.
Yeah, without looking into.
Kind of like around the corner and under the grandstands and, and if you don't walk all the way down that way, you're not even gonna see us.
I wonder if Beth Carmichael would be able to put together some visual things about the attractions in Trumbull County, if she, you could utilize some of her.
She has the.
Photographs, things like that, to hang on those walls there, or.
She has a, a library of photos, of framed photos in that building, I've seen them, she showed me, there's a ton of different things around Trumbull County.
Lisa, can you reach out this week to some different departments?
Yeah, you can put some of those up.
Who wants to be involved, what they have, and then.
Some of them are historic, some of them are more modern.
I hope you get with the fair board, and we'll figure out what space we can utilize.
Okay.
It, it definitely was worth it, when we proved that by the clicker and the number of.
Oh, yeah.
Hits, we had the number of impressions, uh, the, the number of contacts we made, everything from helping people, referring them to senior levy to.
Yeah, because it was, uh.
Uh, JFS and other, other issues that we had there.
Yeah, somebody made the remark, there were only, what, six or seven people that came and saw us the whole week.
That's, yeah, we, we, that's laughable, I mean, we, we had the clicker and we counted.
Yeah.
Part of what we do is public outreach and getting to the public and answering those questions, so this is part of our job. It is.
It is.
It is.
Okay.
So.
It is, that's why I think it, we need to be more visible.
Well, let's, let's work on that for the next meeting and get some updates, Lisa, if you're getting for us for the next week.
Okay.
Um, and see what we, well, I guess next week or?
Our meeting will be thumped a week.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, the month of the day.
I mean, a day, a day, I'm sorry.
So Wednesday will be our workshop, Thursday will be the regular meeting.
For goodness sake.
So for Wednesday, if you can get some feedback from different departments and see who has a bigger interest, um, you know, one thing too, it is the fair, there are people who'll be coming there, you know, we've been talking about nine-one-one, 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 I think we need to tell Tasty, we need to have some form of a audiovisual we're hiring, click on the, you know, the link, or, you know, scan the link, or see if we can get something made up, do advertise for the jobs that we have open in the county, whether it's COs in the jail, or whether it's nine-one-one, um, but I think that's a place to recruit too, 'cause you do have people that, that are out there for the week for the fair and, and may be able to go back and tell family members or whatever, you know, if, if they're seeing us, it's a good place to market, we, you know, and during the demolition derby and other things, you know, we've got thousands of people in those grandstands, so they can walk by that.
And inevitably, it's going to rain, and when it rains, people come in there.
They do, yes.
It's fair, it will rain.
Don't wish that on us.
No, it's, I'm sorry, it's the way it works.
You gotta knock on wood or something.
But, yeah.
Hope it doesn't rain.
Let's pass that on to Tasty too, to see if we can get something made up, you know, one of those pull-up things or whatever, you know, that we're hiring maybe with a picture of a.
QR code.
Dispatcher on there, QR code on there and information, you know, with some of the benefits, this and that, great starting pay, you know, but, uh, vacation, sick leave, whatever, something to try to use as a recruitment tool that we can set up, we can probably set that up right out in that midway area where they come in the grandstand, and everybody that comes to the grandstand will be able to see it, if we put it outside.
Are you planning to have a meeting again out there that week?
Um, yes, we need to schedule it out with the fair board too, and we need to figure, we did it last year.
Mm-hmm.
And it worked out, you know, it worked well.
We do it every year.
Yeah.
Are we gonna record that, like we do, if you don't?
I don't know if we have the capability to do that, we didn't last year.
No, I wouldn't say that we're gonna have the capability to do this year.
Okay.
I mean, we, we can definitely record it and.
Upload it, yeah.
Upload it after, but.
But we can't stream it.
Right.
Right.
Stream it, no.
Okay.
Yeah, we can record it and do it after, that's fine.
That's okay.
It, it wouldn't, probably just audio or both?
Right now, we have capabilities for audio. Want to do video, we can definitely wizard some.
Do we have the capability of doing a Facebook Live on the county site that we put up on the county site?
With the past cell coverage out there, I'm gonna say no.
With the new cell coverage?
With the new cell coverage, fingers crossed.
Okay.
We have too many players involved right now, they're promising a lot, but until I see it, I'm not gonna hear.
But it is a low traffic time of the day, I mean, it is, uh, you know, Tuesday before it, it's crowded, so we're not getting everybody hitting the.
Right.
The cell towers at that time, so let's look and see if there is something we could do.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people.
At the very, at the very least, rebroadcasting it later.
A lot of people like to use TikTok, so I'm not.
And then Italian Fest, same thing, tents out there.
Yeah.
Lisa, yeah, should be in charge of that, making a reservation, the space for that.
I think I ended up doing it last year, but we can work together, I'll be glad to do it.
Okay.
I did it for both.
I thought that went well.
I did it for both, and we did it together, and I think, 'cause you guys had done the fair, I did, so I did.
Only thing I would ask is this year, if we can see, last year you guys were kinda down on the very end in no man's land, and I know before and past years I've seen the commissioner's booth be up, and we even had the green team, things like that with recycling, it was up more toward where the Democratic ten is, closer to where you walk in, everyone has to walk by you, and if we can ask the Italian Fest if there's a way we can not be on the end, if we can be.
We want body.
Closer to the entrance, more sexually located.
I know. We can, we can see what we can do, a little.
You were just a little lost down there in the end, and I think, uh, unless people were going to watch Bocci or going down to the concert.
Right.
It was like, what's down there, and then they just turned around, so.
Well, we did it quite, kind of last minute last year.
Yeah.
We did.
So that might be why, but we could see what we can do.
Yeah, if you can be in that area, kinda like where the.
Okay, okay.
The middle of it.
Right.
Close to the Italian cookies, it would be great.
(laughing).
Close to the bakery, okay.
Exactly. Okay, and, um, we'll go to.
Well, I let.
Chrissy's here with that, and I got one last thing we'll wrap up with.
It'll be Diane kinda running the show here, and then Chrissy will kinda be here to answer some questions.
Can you have a seat at the?
Diane's show.
The big girl, the big girl's table?
Yes.
I was about to sit this close to you.
Uh-oh.
So our senior levy is up for renewal this year. We have three opportunities, correct, Chrissy? I think we have the November of this year, and then the May primary, and then next November. Correct. The first time you can put it on is November twenty-twenty-four, or actually any election next year, even if there's a special you can put it on there. And our elections currently will take us through two thousand twenty-five.
When you say put it on, whether it be renewal or an increase, you could put it on.
This is the question of the day today.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking you.
Um, and they're just.
That is correct.
To, uh, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Yoder, just to chime in there, when you're talking about doing a replacement levy, those by next year may be a, a thing of the past.
I did see that, there's a.
Yes, there's a house still.
How do you?
There's a house still floating around there. Uh, there's house still too, and I can't remember what the number is, I told you what it was, I can't remember why.
Six, three, thirty-four or thirty-five or something.
Uh, there's a house still.
There's a three and a four in there somewhere.
There's a house still out there that's been, it's in Ways and Means Committee, um, and it was voted, I think it's just voted out of committee as a yes, and it is, uh, one of the parts of it is to do away with that kind of language, so you would either do a renewal or an additional, you would not do a replacement, because in a replacement levy, basically, you're being, you know, on a, on a renewal, you're, uh, not increasing
Everything, my thing's the same.
Right, so somebody's gonna be paying exactly what they were paying before, and.
So this is our dilemma. We have had the same renewal since two thousand and five, that's, you know, almost twenty years ago, and costs have gone up for services, the senior population is increasing until, projected till two thousand and thirty because of baby boomers. Um, the baby boomers are just now turning sixty, that's the end of the baby boomer generation, so when they hit their nineties, eighties and nineties, that's when they mostly need the service, so we're looking at two thousand and thirty as being at our height of, of need. So the committee is wanting to ask for a replacement, the current language of replacement. They're not talking about adding any millage, it's the same millage, but replacement just brings your dollars up to the current market value, current cost value. It will bring in, uh, projected to bring in an additional one million thirty-seven thousand dollars that would cost approximately ten dollars and fifty cents per year on a hundred thousand dollar house. Additional to what they're paying now. Right. Currently paying, I think it's like eighteen dollars for a hundred thousand. You round up, yeah, seventeen point four-four. Mm-hmm.
Now the increase.
It would be twenty-six point two-five, increase to a house full of ten dollars per year. A hundred thousand dollar house.
Hundred thou- yeah, based on a hundred thousand dollar.
We usually use hundred thousand dollars as our example. Valuation, but the valuation, the auditor's valuation, not a hundred thousand dollar home, correct? That's something I wanted to clarify. That's the assessed value, a hundred thousand dollar house, and then they pay only taxes on thirty-five percent of that, so that'd be thirty-five thousand dollars
That's the assessed value, a hundred thousand dollar house. And then they pay only taxes on thirty five percent of that, so that'd be thirty five thousand dollars of their values there.
Sweetheart?
Yes, too detailed.
No, appraise, no, you, you're fine.
Yeah, okay.
And I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Appraised value-
Appraised value.
Is the market value, assessed value.
It's right.
We're different in Ohio, we're weird, okay?
Yes, I agree.
Our assessed value is the taxable value, which is thirty five percent. So thirty five, a hundred thousand dollar market value house is what we're talking at about, and they would be, uh, taxed on the thirty five thousand, which is thirty five percent.
Tax assessed value. She calls it tax value, I call it taxes assessed value. A language barrier.
Yep.
We already have waiting lists in the meal programs, we have waiting lists in the homemaker program. That one's been horrendous over the years. I get people who have called, said, I've been on this list for three years. Well, you gotta either wait for someone to die, or go into a nursing home where they don't need the homemaker care, and then we can fulfill that. At the same time, we've got senior centers, you know, people say, well, then why do you have these social centers? Senior centers keep people from needing those, those eventual homemaker care and home delivered meals. You know, you're trying to keep people active and moving, and, you know, I don't know if you've ever dealt with elderly, your own parents, if you stop moving and you're sitting around, then that demise starts to happen, and you fall, and you break a hip, and you're in a nursing home, or you go to the hospital, you come home, you need homemaker care, somebody to do those simple tasks. One of the things that I, I thought of, that I was like, oh, come on, really, this is an issue, and it is. Seniors taking their medication, they drop the pills on the floor. They can't bend down to pick up those pills. They can't even see those pills sometimes, you know, just something simple like that. That's where homemaker care comes in. In our homemaker care, we only can give two hours a week to allow it to spread to more people. Two hours that somebody sees you per week, a home delivered meal daily. Those have waiting lists. We feel that the replacement, instead of going for, if we added, if we went to a, a, uh, increasing it to a one mil levy instead of a point seven five, I think I remember seeing that it almost brings in like four million dollars.
Four point eight million.
We don't feel we need four point eight million, but the replacement fits.
What would that mean?
Meaning a better, a million dollars.
Two point-
Million dollars extra.
Extra.
So three-
So we're at two point four roughly, collecting.
Two point five, two point five nine, yeah.
So this will bring in another million.
The largest class of values right now is residential and agricultural, and it's only collecting at an effective rate of point four nine eight. That's a point seven five mil levy.
When does this need to be decided by?
Well, for your prosecutor and auditors and all that timing of getting all the paperwork, get it on the ballot. I know the ballot language has to be there and approved with all the paperwork by mid-August.
No, I see the first week of August.
Okay.
I don't know the exact date, I usually tell people August first, but it's like ninety days prior to the election.
Ninety days prior to the general election, so I think it's, I think it's August fifth or August sixth, honestly.
Right around that time.
Yeah, I have to look.
So there's the first agenda item is, uh, something to proceed, or necessity. And then it gets through a cycle of paperwork that auditor prosecutor's office, and then there's a second agenda item is the-
Notice, I see.
It's been a while since I had to go through that process.
So, yeah, we-
And then there's paperwork there, so.
Excellent.
I mean, that's pushing, that's with the, there's two separate meetings that have to go through. In addition to their resolution, or to, to you guys.
But you haven't submitted that resolution, have you?
We have not, not requested, you know, well, I don't even know how, is it just a agenda item to request the necessity?
Um, in other, so the, like, the children's services, is what they put on, therefore, recommendation to the commissioners and that.
Yeah, you just need a formal recommendation from your board, like, vote.
We can do that.
But it seems like they didn't do that because that's their-
We're waiting to find out replacements, renewals.
What you guys are interested in doing.
Yeah, where you-
So I'm here to find out.
What's your, where your brain is headed on this.
Well, they're our advisory committee, they, they need to make the-
Oh, they know what they want to do.
Okay, then they need to-
Okay, then we'll send in for the replacements.
That's what they're-
That's what I'm here for.
No, if that's what they're, that's why we have them, to advise the commissioners.
Now, that here, our meeting is in May thirty first, June-
Do you agree, Commissioner? I mean, I think that-
I, I do have some reservations, and the reason I have reservations on this is when the water, or when the sewer bill went up ten bucks, with, I had more phone calls from seniors than from people throughout the community on a ten dollar increase in the sewer bill than any other thing I've dealt with in a year and a half. And people saying they're on a fixed income, they retired from wherever, and they're not getting any more in their retirement, and by us helping them ten dollars a month on their, um, or sewer bill, they weren't happy at all.
Not to mention their, their valuations all went up.
And their valuations went up, so we got the heat from that, Martha, I'm sure received more heat-
Got more heat.
Than anybody.
Oh, we keep getting it.
Then we get this, and now we want to come back with another thing, um, and, and, and I have heard from some seniors who said, you're still taxing seniors, they want, they want to replace you, they want more money for senior services, but they don't want the seniors to pay for it. They're saying, hey, I'm, I'm gonna receive benefits, or maybe I'm not, but because I'm a senior, you're charging me more too, to help me. So why are seniors getting, have to pay for this thing? So they're upset that, they're included in this, they're the ones that own the houses.
Like people pay school taxes, I don't pay for school, but I gotta pay the school taxes.
And their houses are paid off, and they're on a fixed thing where they have to pay their taxes every year, but they don't have to pay the house payment anymore. So they're seeing that over time go up, 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 every year, what they have to come up with out of pocket. As they're retired, they've already paid for their house, and they figure, you know, I've heard the comment many times, I never owned my house because you keep taxing me on something that I've owned for years, and when I die, it goes off to somebody else, and you never own anything except for your cemetery plot in life. So, um, I have heard from seniors on that, that if we were to do this, they still feel they should be exempt somehow from, to be in tax themselves to pay for other seniors as much as other people say, well, why aren't we paying more and more and more on everything? Figure it out with all this extra money the state's getting, have the state give you a million dollar grant and take care of it that way. You know, someone needs to be lobbying for that instead of taxing us.
Just to clarify, the property taxes, the extra property taxes, do not go to the state.
Oh, no.
Okay, I-
What I'm saying is have the state give a million dollar grant, though, to cover the cost of this and not-
And, well, that'll come out in somebody else's tax, or along the way.
Right. I understand that. Or what, or if it doesn't go to the state, the money, the increased property value goes to?
Schools, mostly.
Yeah, we get very minimal of that.
I, as I explained, uh, on our website, there is a place that you can see local government impact. There's a little thing you can click, and you can see exactly, uh, or well, I'll say an estimate, because it's never exact on this, at this point. Our collection, exact collections last year for each entity, school district, township, whatever, um, versus what they will receive, um, estimated what they'll receive this year. And there are several school districts that actually are going to receive more than the county will in additional taxes. Howland comes to mind, one point eight, one point nine million.
And it is something, even if we, she's got a waiting list already. So there's already seniors saying, are you gonna pay more? I'm still on a waiting list, I didn't get any services last year or the year before. I'm on a waiting list, and I'm gonna die here in the next couple of years, and I may never get off that waiting list. So we're not taking care of all the seniors with this money, we're just taking care of the fortunate ones that are on the list early enough. I mean, I know a ninety-two-year-old lady who's paying four hundred a month or something for meals on wheels to deliver to, and I said, have you called senior services? Well, I don't want anything about them. Why are you paying all this money when there's services out there? Well, if she were to go, she'd be on a waiting list, but now we're telling her, oh, you know, the house you paid for forty years ago you paid off? Well, now we're gonna raise your taxes a little bit more on it to help some lady that made the list.
And to your point, and to your point, I don't think there's an, an amount of money where there's not gonna be a waiting list. There's an infinite need here, where, where if the, you were to increase it, there would still be a waiting list.
And not just because you're senior, do you get the service, there's also an evaluation that best, the person who has the most need and doesn't have the four hundred dollars to shell out for meals.
Right.
You always have that too. But just because you're senior doesn't mean you are automatically in the system for service, for free service.
But you will automatically be paying in the system.
Like having free healthcare, we don't have free healthcare either.
Absolutely.
Well, at the end of the day, it isn't perfect storm right here, because you have these valuations that have gone up. You have people, families, businesses, seniors that are up in arms about that, that are living paycheck to paycheck. You got, like Commissioner said, the sewer bills that have gone up, that we needed to, that's money that we have to put back into our plan so that we're EPA, um, compliant. This has to do, those are things that we have to do, um, talking about public health and safety. But, but you look at all these things that are mounting for these families across the board, not to mention inflationary costs. And people are strapped, you know, and, and I think now's a difficult time to ask for that a little bit more.
I mean, talk to the Tribune, they raised the price of paper from fifty cents to a buck and a quarter, and people were going nuts about that. You know, they, they get, they feel they have a right to read the paper and not have to pay that much money. It's, we, we're living in a bubble because we all have jobs, we have the incomes coming in. We have to think about the people out there that we are trying to treat, in a sense, but then there's that group in the middle that we're not treating or aren't getting treatment from it, or still drive and still, you know, or, or have their wish to them that they don't need the services.
A family of five that's barely able to live paycheck to paycheck, you know.
Right, but they're still, they're still functioning, they're still driving their own doctors and stuff.
Oh, no, of course.
They're still cleaning up, or their, their daughter is coming over and doing the cleaning and all that there.
But they're gonna take a hit, you know.
But the ones that don't have that, they're paying for, and these seniors are paying for it too. You know, they're paying for other people to do it when they're taking care of themselves. And it's weird because they don't like that. They needed it to be different, but it's, you're pitting-
I know.
Uh, one demographic against each other, and it's, um, and those are the ones we're gonna hear from, those are the ones who are gonna be upset about this that say, I don't need it, you know, and, and I do hear that, and maybe I'm in more of a bubble, be on the side of the aisle than I'm on, but people don't, you know, they feel they're taxed to death.
It's hard to argue with that right now, because look at, look at the evaluations, and that's not us, that's not Martha, it's the state.
Well, you see to the restaurant, raise the price of spaghetti, you know, fifty cents on your weekly special, and watch how many people make a comment on their way out the door. How many old people make that comment?
You know what they will do, they just won't come, even worse.
And the cost of spaghetti went up, I'm sure, but it, somehow we gotta figure ways to absorb what we do, and it's, we're kind of stuck there because I understand, you know, there will be a waiting list always, and there is a waiting list now. It's, it's the feedback that we're gonna get from that, you know, what is, what is the wisest use of that, and how much do we put on people that already own their house?
I go back to two thousand and five, we started this.
I know.
Same cost, same, same revenue in-
But, but in two thousand and five, was there ever a mention of increasing that? Was there ever a mention that, you know, look, these are our needs today, we're gonna have to increase this along the way? I don't think that was ever the case. I think it was always meant to be, this is gonna bring in X amount of dollars, we're gonna use it to our, the best of our ability. We're gonna help as many people as we can with it, and that's what it is. There was never this mention of, oh, by the way, in five years, we gotta increase it, or ten years, we gotta increase it, because it-
And I guess we could say that about all of our senior, special program programs.
I, I know, sure, no.
And, and schools too, there's people I, I hear all the time too, that I send my kids to private school, and they're graduated twenty years ago, and I'm still paying for school levies, increasing, 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 so there's, that's life, but, uh, it's just, I, I think the perfect storm, like you said, Commissioner, the state really stuck it to us with these increases that we have to deal with now.
Yep.
And we just got, I mean, you're still doing reviews, um-
You should see the amount of people that we have to, that are challenging, I mean, it's, I get the emails every day, it's loading.
Well, actually, I'll, I'll be honest, we, we have, we had less border revision complaints than we thought we would. We, we are-
It's a lot, it's a lot.
I know what you're saying, it's, it's under, okay, we have a little bit less than three hundred border revision complaints, and we have a hundred and forty-four thousand parcels. So when you look at-
I know.
Who's actually filed the complaints, and, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying there wasn't, we did not, and some of that is because we did those initial reviews, and that helped, but it's, you know, I get that, yeah, it sounds, it looks like a lot because it's pulling up your phone, but when you look at it in perspective of how many properties we actually have, and most of them went up, almost all, there were a few that went down, um, you know, just a few people neglect their properties, it, it went down. But most of them went up, it's a hundred, over a hundred forty-four thousand parcels, and we had less than three hundred complaints. Everyone I have talked to, my fellow auditors, um, we have a consultant now, when he found out how few we had, he was actually, like, really surprised.
Is there a way somehow, and I'm just saying outside the box there, is there a way somehow in anything that we do in government, or like, we had a gentleman pass away, and he left two hundred thousand in a dog pound? Is there any way where someone can voluntarily donate money to seniors, that, that maybe in their paycheck or whatever, something through the county payroll thing where we can donate a half percent or wherever we go to seniors, just out of philanthropy? There are people that love to give back, and they'll give to animals, they'll give to parks, they'll give to this, that may want to give back to our seniors. Make, make, in honor of their grandmother, y'all donate a, you know, a thousand dollars, or all donate five hundred dollars or something. Is there any other, thinking outside the box alternative means you've ever heard of through senior services? Where somebody, all, all it takes is one multimillionaire to die and leave a million dollars to the county for seniors, and we don't have to raise taxes on anybody. Not that that's gonna happen, but there are people that are philanthropic, that give money all the time to causes, and then whenever they had a thing at GM, you know, they'd have a challenge wherever the United Way or whatever, they'd raise, you know, six hundred thousand dollars or whatever it is out of people's paychecks that they voluntarily gave to United Way or things like that. Is there some other means of that where we can, for the people that have, that are gonna give back anyway, they'll take care of our seniors locally, to not have to tax the other seniors to pay for it, um, they may be apt to do that.
Not to mention, I think if you're, this is left unsaid right now, but this is a big part of it. If you're asking for any sort of increase, if people understand that there's any sort of increase right now, this might not pass. I mean, we've been seeing the senior levy resoundingly pass, but, but it's been going down a little bit here in the last, I'm sorry.
It was the highest, I think, the last time.
Was it really?
Yeah.
At what percentage?
Seventy-two percent, seventy-three percent.
I think you're gonna see that percentage change if you ask for an increase.
No, I, I think people do have a soft spot for seniors. Like you said, I'd pay, if it's ten dollars, I'd pay thirty. It's, so some eighty-year-old lady on fixed income wouldn't have to pay anything at all.
Well, here's the, you guys were talking about, uh, percentages of people that complained or filed for their, we have sixty thousand seniors, only ten percent are receiving the services.
That's not to say that every senior requires it.
And, and just so you're right, and that's why, you know, I'm just pointing out to you.
So we wanna tax a hundred forty-four thousand households so that ten percent of the seniors-
Those are your most need, and you still have more that have more needs at home.
And, and just to clarify, because I just want, that ten dollars is not ten dollars a month?
I understand.
Okay.
It's the, yeah, yeah. And there are three, at least three opportunities for this to pass. If it goes on in November, say it went on as a replacement fail, you would still be able to put it on to, uh, elections next year as a renewal.
As a renewal.
Let the people speak.
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm not, I'm not a fan of that at all, trying to find the right way to squeeze it to make it work. I mean, if people want it, they want it, if they don't, they don't. No, I'm not, I'm not trying to-
Well, if, if, if you don't, if you don't-
Well, the turnout's low here, so we're gonna stick it in here to get it, I'm not playing that.
But if you do it, if you don't do it again, if you don't do a renewal again, you won't have any.
I understand.
Oh, but you're gonna, I think that'll pass either way by the end of November next year.
You're done.
By November next year, it's gone.
So let me ask you, if you go for a replacement this time, and then can you change it back to renewal then in May?
Yeah, yeah.
Are there any other levies, MRDD or anything else coming up this fall?
I think all of them.
Oh, there's a lot.
Were there four?
Uh, there's, there's a bunch, we have a bunch that expire in tax year twenty, twenty-four. So they're putting them on as their first opportunity this November, and that would be, um, uh, border D D, um, children's services, and, um, mental health.
But all of those are doing renewals and not replacements?
Here's the thing, it, we're making it sound like the commissioners are not caring for the seniors. We're passing a two point five million dollar levy, just for seniors. So this, this idea that, oh, we won't, we're not taking care of seniors, we are taking care of seniors, but we're also listening to people that have to pay tax. And, uh, so there's, there's a balance here, has to be a balance. But at some point, with all these levies on there, if you ask for, with, with the, the climate that's out there right now, right, wrong, or indifferent, with the, with the national election, I think people are taxed out, and I think you're gonna see those numbers flip if you try to ask for more. I really do.
Martha, is there a way to just tax part of the population on all, like, homestead exemption type of thing, where seniors, seventy years older or whatever, still not paying?
They already get paid. No, no, that's, that's a legis, that's a-
No, it's like, it's like paying, it's like paying, um-
That's a legislative issue, not an administrative.
You don't have any children in the school, but you still gotta pay, you know.
Right, it's, it's a legislative issue, not, and that's actually one-
I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of the, the seniors that are gonna have to pay, the fixed budget seniors.
I know.
I, I understand what you're saying, but, but that's a legislative issue, not a, we have to follow the Ohio revise code.
How about these seniors that don't have to-
I am a creature of the Ohio revise.
Don't have any children in schools, obviously, they have to pay.
Oh, I-
I have to go, and I have to pay, I'm not a senior.
I homeschooled my kid. I paid thirty-five years of property taxes.
Yeah, see?
When's your next senior levy meeting?
July, or June sixth or seventh.
Just think, uh, uh, an increase right now, with everything that's going on economically for, for families and seniors and for businesses, wouldn't be, wouldn't be wise. And you're, and I, and I think you're gonna see a change in those numbers, number one, even if it's a renewal, but numbers, or not a re, yeah, even if it's a renewal, but if you increase it, I think you're gonna see those numbers flip, I really do. I mean, those numbers we talked about, about the passing seventy-two percent.
Yeah, um, and I'd have to check this, but, um, what she just pointed, asked me the question, uh, Martha Yoder, Chumel County Auditor again, um, she asked if we had any renewals fail in November.
Mm-hmm.
That must have been weird happening.
And I don't think that we did, but I could be wrong. I'd have to go back to my paperwork on that.
Yeah.
Because I, I tracked all of that, because, you know, we're looking at the, how many people-
Oh, you mean renewal with new.
Yeah, right, renewal, not-
The townships and boroughs, like, on, on that case, because we just see some strange things happening.
Right.
Instead of a replacement, can you do a renewal and an additional, both separate issues?
Yes.
Oh?
You could do a renewal, then we could add an additional.
Where you have the renewal, then you have an additional, whatever, also, they could vote one in, one down?
What's the least amount that you can ask for?
I like that idea.
I think it is, the least amount.
Has to be on the premise of point two five, though, correct?
I would imagine that, after a smaller amount, so.
Right, and, yeah, that's-
But, let's see, you know, like, the board to decide what they want to put out there. You know, there are plenty of strategies and how you screw it when you get on, but, um, I would say about half the levies I've done for the townships have been replacements.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a, a new concept.
Right.
Right.
There are a lot of old levies out there that they're just trying to move up into the, um, uh, voted, the full voted range.
Well-
The additional point two five is where it brings in a lot more, too.
Right. I don't have, she did a, a calculation of the replacement on what's there, and she did one for the one mil, but she didn't do a point two five.
It would be a quarter of that.
Yeah. It would bring in, yeah, it would bring, it looks like it would bring-
Point two million.
Yeah, it looks like it would bring in, um,
A point two million.
And, and you're, one, yeah, one point two million is the original.
Which is right, exactly what you were getting, you needed, right?
And, and it's, and we're at one-
Well, that was just the only one.
It's a little, what, if replaced, it's a little bit less than that. It's still over a million, but it's a little less than one point two. So it would be more-
That's actually asking for more.
If you ask for more, you'll get just slightly more if both have.
A renewal plus an additional point two five.
Yeah.
Let me ask one more, continuation, the continuation levy. Let me ask one more, continuation, the continuation levy, continuing levy, does it just keep the dollar amount the same forever?
Mm-hmm, unless you put it on as a renewal.
So you never have to do.
That's what happens with a lot of the townships. They passed theirs a, a long time ago as a continuing levy, so they didn't have to keep renewing it.
Going to a ballot.
Paying election expenses every five years, um, and they stay at that, uh, year, they call it tax value year, and that's what effective rates are calculated on until they're put on as a replacement.
That would be what should have been done initially, to have that.
Should have been. Yeah, if that's what, if they, if that's what they intended to.
If that's what they intended, yeah, just keep it one dollar amount and never have to.
We also have a lot of, um, you know, county levies and local levies, that they're putting them on now for ten years, so that they don't have to renew them every five years, and again, they, uh, stay on election. Our, our Board of DD are at ten years now, um, and so is, uh, Children's Services.
If you did a ten-year, you can always replace it in the middle of that, right? You can do a replacement in year three or four if you want to.
Well, I don't wanna say that because, like Martha said, there's legislation out there that you may not be able to do the replacement starting next year. In the past, yes, but we're not sure where that is going to be going with replacements after this.
But you can always do an additional in that timeframe.
Okay.
Well, I think the senior levy, um, committee, the.
Submit their letter.
Submit their letter or make a formal vote of what they wanna do.
See it, uh, at the June seventh meeting, two weeks after it'll be on the agenda. It's, 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 it's cutting it close. I mean, it has to be acted on at that time.
Right, and if it's not acted on, then you won't have anything on the ballot.
Oh, no, we'll, we'll make sure to do that.
And if you let us know ahead of time, we can get everything ready to go for once the prosecutor's office submits it, and we can do that turnaround on the county audit certificate pretty quickly.
You mean, know, let you know it's on the agenda ahead of time?
What you decided whether it's replacement or renewal and additional. You'll have our stuff ready to go for whenever she submits to us, and then we could turn around almost, you know, from, you know, from Martha's there to sign it pretty quickly.
I think we'll have a gauge on that, too, especially if Ray Princess did, we're contemplating what to do, replacement versus additional versus renewal. I'm sure we'll get some feedback, you know, we always do when we talk about stuff like this at a meeting. And you'll be able to hear some other sides of some people, which I encourage the public to let us know what they think on this.
Ready for me?
Done on that? One more, though.
Okay.
Um, did you see we got additional funds from the Ohio Health Aging Grant?
Yay.
Eleven thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars, and I gotta figure out how to, who to award it to or how to spend it. Bide it up amongst those, I don't know.
A good problem to have, so.
I wish it was more, we'd have to deal with.
What's, what are your ideas for it? What's your first step?
I don't, I just, I, I got this, then I, we signed it for it, and I thought, oh, I'll deal with that later when I have time.
Yeah.
So within the next week, I have to figure out a plan. At first, I was like, let's just, Trumbull County Office of Valley Affairs, it's gonna be closing. But then I thought, no, we'll figure it out. I might look at who we did an award and see if maybe one of those could be awarded.
Can you add this with people on the waiting list, or is there a few more people from the waiting list then?
They're gonna get, they're gonna, the, the people that are going to have to leave on your Office of Valley Affairs, we have that covered.
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you.
You need to have that on, one of these is on.
Yeah.
All right, I just realized when I looked at my sheet here that it's wrong, so I'm gonna send you guys the right one, but I have some questions for you, anyway, that I know I'm gonna have on there, so I'm gonna go ahead. Before I go into what I wanna tell you, I, did you hear what I said? This is.
I'll call you.
So, I gave you the, I had, I printed the wrong sheet, so the sheets are incorrect. I will send you another sheet, but I do have questions for you that I'd like to get answered today. And I, one of them involves an email that I received during the meeting from the other commissioner. And it's, I guess she's saying taking, but she's saying talking here. Um, stop taking applications past the deadline. That was her order for me. Now.
Not the majority vote of the board commissioners.
Okay, that's fine, I won't, that's what I wanted to know. What time is it, so I can read it down?
Although we are nearing that point.
And I understand that. Um, however, the, uh, I wanna clarify, just for the record on this. Um, the lady that was here from Best Purpose came in twice, and you guys told her to send me an application. And I've had that on hand for a while, so, just to clarify. I, I do have people that just send me stuff, I put it in the commissioner drive, I put it on the maybe list. Most of the things that I've been sent, though, have come, or people have come to the meeting and asked if they could submit something. So I'm just doing what I've been told. Uh, as I said, I actually printed the wrong one, I real, I should have realized it. The on, only thing that we've had, um, that were, the Gustavus Township, it's now two requests. Uh, the third one was approved, and I'll get it on the agenda next week if that's okay with you. That was the playground one, it was over a hundred and fifty, I think. I'll get it on the agenda. I have everything for it, I just didn't wanna overload the agenda. Um, Farmington Township was denied, and theirs was for forty-four thousand. Um, everything is right on the spreadsheet, I just printed the wrong, uh, update sheet. Um, but, uh, I wanted to know if you wanted me to freeze that money and have them do another request?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's the only one they've had, so, yes, to that, I, and. The actual, that, that spreadsheet at the bottom, though, that's still correct, that's still all the same numbers. You also have.
Oh, I sent their sheet.
Okay, that's fine, I will send it to you. Um, but the, the bottom line number is just a little over nine hundred thousand right now, um, with everything, all the changes that have happened over the last couple of weeks. Um, I also included the most recent, uh, allocated promise sheet, um, and that's got all the most recent things that have been encumbered and paid, so everything's up to date, the sheet that I gave you, um.
I know that Veterans Outreach has been waiting for some time to see.
Right, and she's been communicating with them, and I don't know what, there's no decision.
Okay.
So I do know, I've seen some stuff go back and forth.
Okay.
I'm not always completely in the loop on those, though, because, uh, so, you know, Attorney Rogers may CC me.
Yeah.
And then they may not CC me on the return, so I don't get to see every single thing, but I do know they were talking, so.
Okay.
I think that the, what she has, what Attorney Rogers has said to me is that, um, they're actually trying to kind of rework the application a little bit to make it so that, because they may have, the, what they're asking for may not be eligible, but there may be other things that are. So she's kind of been working with them on that.
Okay.
Right, and that's really it. I apologize for printing the wrong sheet. I got a little, I had some stuff on the allocated promise spreadsheet that I had to balance this morning that I lost a little bit of money there. I found it.
You looked under the cap, did you?
Yes, I looked under the cap, so. So I will send you, uh, I will redo that sheet and I will send it to you. Uh, also, just kinda note what you told me today about Farmington and about, uh, talking or taking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just the last thing to talk about, because we talked about it briefly, we really didn't discuss it. And, um, you know, we, we, there are three commissioners that the public's paying for salaries to do community work and to do the people's work here at, and the board commissioners. We, we need to be mindful of the expenses that we have, we need to be mindful of what we do on the public dime and what we do on the taxpayers' watch. And, um, the issue of the fly-in came in, came up a couple of weeks ago. Um, the last couple of years, at least I thought, when I was here last year, the DC fly-in. You know, I thought, you know, to send a representative, the representative is the way to go.
Yeah.
Um, Commissioner Frenchco went last year, went the year before, you know, volunteered, wanted to do it, I was new, I had no, uh, you know, deferred to the experience at the time or whatever for what was going on. Uh, the fly-in is coming up again this year, and to talk about future things for Trumbull County, future things to bring to Trumbull County to, uh, uh, get to know the players involved and where we can fit us, we find federal funding and enhance some of the projects we already have on the federal level. And, and, uh, and look for maybe funds out there that we didn't have. We, we've had great success with getting funding for the airport. Uh, we've, we've got, um, a variety of things, everything from FEMA stuff to, you know, we had the ear of the, the powers that be. We talked on the, the board about that's coming up, who wants to go, um, and we kinda said, you know, she said, Commissioner Frenchco said she wanted to go. I said, I'd like to go, I think you expressed you even had an interest of going, but I, I don't think it's responsible. You know, it's eight hundred dollars per person to go. Then you're talking another four to six hundred in a plane ride, then you're talking another four to six hundred dollars in a hotel room, and then whether it's other expenses you have while you're there, there could be potentially two thousand dollars a person to go when, I don't know that we need all three commissioners to go to it. I don't know that we need two commissioners to go to it, and I thought, one commissioner is kind of the way we've always done that. Um, and, and we never really resolved, I mean, any of us can go, we're commissioners, we could do our own thing and do whatever we wanna do. But to appropriate reimbursements for that, you know, we had talked about our reimbursement policy when we had issues before with the fly-in and not getting things approved in advance, and we would do that whole fiasco two years ago, and then last year again, and then with the receipts and it taking a year to, uh, approve things, and, you know, we, we kinda set a precedent of, if you go to these things, we get a permission in advance to go, we appropriate that, and so the expenses can come back quickly. You know, so we're not holding anybody up to get reimbursed with stuff, but it's approved by the majority of the board. Um, I guess we never, we kinda left that unsettled a little bit on, are we gonna send two people? Are we gonna send three people this year? Or, or I should say, not send, are we gonna approve reimbursements for three people to go? And then look the taxpayers in the eye and say, you know, three of us went to DC. I mean, you, whenever we see that in other government, turns my stomach a little bit when you see people traveling on taxpayers' dime, doing things on taxpayers' dime. You know, I, I personally, you know, I don't ask the county to pay for my cell phone, I don't use a county vehicle, I use my own gas. I mean, there's ways that I just personally believe, as a public servant, there's just things you do. You just don't, you don't, you're reimbursed for every single thing that you do, or you don't, don't have to. Now, a trip like this, of course, of the magnitude that, it would never be expected for somebody to, to go to work for free, you know, on, on their own dime for that. So I, I, I get it. Um, but I guess we need to come up with a consensus of who's going, who's getting reimbursed, who's not getting reimbursed, and it's just, you know, what is fair. It has nothing to do, remove the personalities out of it, whether it's me, president of the board, whether it's someone that's gone before, um, whether it's, it's you. What is legitimately right in, in comparison? What have other counties done as far as we know? Um, now, I do know, like, the Chamber will send a group of people, the Port may send a group of people. You know, commissioners, should they send a group of people? We really can't do anything together to make decisions wise. We can do research and inventory or whatever and, and talk on behalf of the county, but we can't make any decisions on behalf of the county when we're there, um, or make any promises on behalf of the county without, you know, majority of the board making that, that decision. Um, so I, I guess, because there was a, a bill came in, the sheriff from the Chamber of Commerce already, that Commissioner Frenchco's asking for her eight hundred dollar dues, or to be paid for that, um, yeah, I don't know, I guess.
Eight hu, eight hundred including the flight?
No, eight hundred was the, the, the fee to go on the trip, the fee to be paid to the.
Right, and she's.
Chamber of Commerce.
To clarify, Auditor Yoder here, just to clarify, she's not asking to be reimbursed for this. She's already obligated the county for eight hundred dollars for this without approval from you guys, just saying. It's, it's a bill from the Chamber.
And it's to the Chamber, which she voted no for us to even join the Chamber, you know, which to me doesn't make sense.
She did not, I mean, she, she did that without.
Yes, it, she voted no to join the Chamber, she voted no in Valley Vision, but she wants to jump on a plane and go with them, to work with them, and then
and have us pay the dues to them. I have no problems with that, but, but at the same time, you should go on your own dime then. I, here's a real simple solution. The president of the board should go, A, because you're the president of the board and you, you've expressed interest, and B, because you're new and you've never been on one of these things. You'd report back to the board at a public meeting what you've learned and what we can do.
And I don't think we got a real good synopsis when she went last year.
No.
And when we got the synopsis and report back what, what happened, it was a very vanilla report back to us that it was like, whoa, what happened there? You know, we.
Right.
We should know more than anybody, more than the papers or any other thing that went on there. Yeah, there was progress made there by everybody there, but I don't know if we have a real detailed, got there in this day, here's the meeting we went to, here's what we talked to.
No, you didn't.
Here's, there was no, nothing came to us to vote on the, decide after they went, or nothing came, can I get a consensus to call this person back and tell him this or that?
No.
It was kind of a, what did we get out of that investment? You know, I, I, you know, again, removing the personalities out of it, we're just trying to see what is the best use of taxpayer dollars for this, and.
I think one individual going, and for those reasons that I said, you're the president of the board and you haven't gone yet, I think would be a great experience for you, number one, in, in your capacity.
And someone hasn't gone twice, you, I'm sure she'd use the statement, well, I've been president of the board yet, and you, you have twice and I haven't. You know, that's a, a different argument, but, um.
Nobody's saying anybody can't go, it's just, the board should not fund every, the taxpayers should not fund all three commissioners to go. I think that's a, that's a reasonable.
But that's a, that's a fiscally responsible answer.
Yeah, a reasonable thing, yeah.
Unless there was something on there that we needed to go, that we really needed, we were requested by the Chamber, hey, we need air support, we need, we need a couple of people that are really make this happen, you know, this is, I don't know what's on the line right now. I mean, of, of course, we always need to care about the airbase, we always need to care about other federal funds that could come here. Um, you know, she's not gonna be here in, in January, and we know that, that's a fact.
That's another.
So, so you go there and make contacts and stuff now, to not be able to follow through with it maybe fully and entirely.
Right.
And, and for the same reason, I'd use the argument with you also, you, you are for election also, uh, uh, you know, this.
That's true.
Just to be fair and equitable across the board.
Sure.
I will be here for two more years.
Right.
And so by requesting to go, there is continuity.
That's true.
Of doing as such, and then next year, whoever the new people are there, maybe it would be their turn, because they'll have three years ahead of them to be able to work on the stuff that they started and initiated while in DC. Or wha, whether it be the driving into Columbus or into DC. So I, I get some thinking on it. The new guy here with this stuff, but when I look at it, it's like, should we, you know, this is, if we're gonna reimburse, we're, we're paying our taxpayer funds for this. This isn't a magic bag of money we're just taking and paying people for.
I think one permissioner going is enough, and, uh, you know, I think we did that in the past, too, so I don't know how to argue with that, so, um, no. I, I have no problems with it.
No, I, I do wanna check the, the journal entry to see, because we did discuss it during a meeting before, and just make sure, I don't think we took a vote at all on who's going, and if we did, we never discussed who's getting reimbursed.
We need to take a vote on it if we did, I don't care.
And Martha?
Just a, just two things I wanna say. The obligated the county, and we, we preached, Christie and I have sat here over and over again and said, we need POs before we do invoices.
That's right.
And that was done again in the wrong order. The other thing is I would suggest if you're going to go and the, um, uh, the Chamber already has her registered, I would suggest, and, and a bill to us, I would suggest having Sherat or somebody call and see if you can adjust it to you, like, change the registration to you, so that we're not.
On the hook for something that isn't gonna happen.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I guess let's think about it tonight, we can bring it up tomorrow in the, in the meeting there, because we need, do need to discuss it publicly and, and come to some consensus, look at our policy that we had last year that we implemented as far as.
Right.
Travel reimbursement, and then look and see what we did discuss, 'cause I don't wanna speak out of turn. If we did, voters all vote to go through that day, that's one thing. I don't think we did. We discussed it on who wanted to go, and we may have said, okay, okay, but we never discussed reimburse, who's getting reimbursed.
I guess I'm of the opinion, anybody can go, we can all go, but we should only be reimbursed for one, you know.
Or it's overkill, it's a, it's a, it's excessive use of taxpayer dollars, um, that, you know, I don't know if they'd be justified or needed.
Yeah.
I mean, I have to look, too. I mean, I, I'll look tonight, I'll do some research on what some other county commissioners do. I'll call CCAO this afternoon, because I do know, like, when they have the national conference.
Yeah.
When they have conferences in DC, sometimes all three go.
Oh, yeah.
I know Asher Bill is going to CCAO, thinks all three of them together.
But those are conferences for us, for the.
Giog is done at, Port is done at, correct.
This is a little different.
This, right, so, I'll, I'll see what other ones will do, what's the norm, and if that's, if the norm is reimbursing more than. And if that's, if the norm is reimbursing more than one, and they go to, on the lobby on behalf of your community, that's great. If that's what they do, if, uh, we'll see if there's any precedents that are locally here, or at least within the county, and how we've done it. I don't know that in the county we've ever sent two commissioners out of town at the same time.
I know, I-
Or something. Um, uh, there may have been some places where people have flown to look at a certain project, or get a business here. I don't know if Altium, or if anyone went on trips with, with, uh, any of those businesses there, or any Lordstown meetings in Detroit or anything with more than one commissioner.
Might have been that, you know?
You know, I, I don't know. We'd have to look at, at some of the, the paths and do some research on that. Um, but I just don't think we should willy-nilly just be like, hey, I'm going, you're going, he's going, she's going, and we're just, you know, well, the expenses, here's all our expenses.
And again, everybody can go, all three of us, but, yeah, I think one should be reimbursed, but I think-
You know, or the official designated to represent the county on that thing, because we can't have two, like you said, officially, two people-
No.
You know, constitutes, as you would say, a violation of-
Right.
Sunshine laws, if two of us are there meeting with the same person, or happen to be, you know, in the same meeting together, getting, making decisions on anything. Doesn't look good. All right, let's think about this overnight, discuss it tomorrow, but I just wanna bring on the table, because-
Sure.
Wheels are in motion, I did get a call, too, from the Chamber, saying, hey, who's going? We thought President was going, who's going?
Right.
Okay, I don't have anything else, anybody?
Me neither. Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Mr. Councilor Mesa?
Yes.
From Lloyd.
Yes.